Good evening.
Maybe it is.
And welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council scheduled for this December 6, 2021. We are in council chambers and this meeting is also live streamed on YouTube. It's after 7:30 PM. We had a finance committee that ran a little late and had some technical difficulties thereafter. So, next meeting will be Monday, December 20, 2021, which will be the last regularly scheduled meeting in the calendar year of 2021. It's hard to believe this year is basically all over. Mr. Apollo, as clerk of council, would you please call the roll? But I want you to know that Mr. Cavan called me earlier today and said he was under the weather and even though it was the Christmas season, he didn't want to give us this gift that he has. So, he did let us know he wouldn't be here. So, having said that, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Bostancic.
Here.
Mr. Cavan's absent. Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
And the agenda, and a long one it is, will remain as presented. At this time, I would ask you to stand and join city council in reciting your pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the council meeting held November 15, 2021.
So moved, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Silvestri. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And the minutes of November 15, 2021 are approved. Welcome, Mr. Mayor. We look forward to your remarks this evening, and a chilly one it is.
That's for sure. Thank you, President Biden Dyke and council members. Nice to see everyone this evening, and I agree, it is definitely chilly out there. Tonight, you've had the second reading of our 2022 appropriations budget on the agenda. Thanks to Scott Boyes, the CFO/COO at the hospital, for the 2022 appropriation improvement projects at the hospital, and also Nate Coe for Worcester wastewater improvement project. All of these meetings underscore the importance of our annual city budget. It's been an unusual year to budget with the unknowns presented by the COVID virus and the unexpected funding introduced by the federal government, and the uncertainty of what is required to be paid back and what will be forgiven. We do understand the importance of an annual budget and council's responsibility to approve this important document. Thank you for your diligence in dealing with this subject. I know it's not something you all do on a daily basis, so it is well-intentioned and we truly appreciate it. Our sincere appreciation of the city crews, PPM, fire, PD, and Main Street Worcester Organization, who helped make the Window Wonderland event so successful on Friday, November 19th. We had one of our largest crowds downtown, and from reports from the merchants, the night was a good success. So, Santa seemed happy to get off that building without a big leap. I am also happy to report that we have extended an offer to Mr. Vince Marion, and he has accepted it to become Worcester's new planning and zoning manager. Vince comes from Lewisville, Ohio, where he has been director of planning and development for the last seven and a half years. Before that, he worked for the city of Alliance, Ohio, in a planning and development position. I've known Vince for the last 14 years as we both serve on the Nevco Board. I believe he will be a nice addition to our management team and plans to start on January 3rd. And lastly, just want to draw attention to Mr. Jeff Batic being here. This is his last official city council meeting before he retires on the 17th of December. So, we wish him well, and for 29 years of serving our city. So, Jeff, thank you so much for everything you've brought to Worcester, and we wish you well in your retirement. And with that, President Biden Dyke, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right. And I'd like to give kudos to Mr. Kurt Denning, manager of PPM. He delivered tonight by showing off his big new Tonka truck, dump truck out there. And I gotta tell you, it's a beauty. I don't think I've even had a car that was as pretty and shiny as that truck is. And if it's like any other vehicle we've had in PPM, we're gonna get close to 20 years' use out of it because our folks in PPM take good care of their vehicles, just like everyone in other divisions take good care of their vehicles. So, now all we have to do is get the plow on, and hopefully that will be the talisman that will keep the snow away. So, it won't be a message to snow. But, nice vehicle, and thanks for bringing and letting us take a look at it. And, you know, hate to say it, Chief Salley, who's not here to defend himself, but at least Mr. Denning delivers. So, I'm still waiting for the fire truck and an ambulance, but hey, you know, who's counting here? There's no petitions, and there's a couple of... But, I guess, when do you want to do that declaration of official intent? Do you want to do that now?
I mean, just note for the record, I did actually something called a declaration of official intent. If I want to be reimbursed, we in the city want to be reimbursed, we have to. So, just out of precautionary, what I did is fill out three. One's for the extension. One was in case we have to find out any of those Worcester, I started with our recognition for the improvements. And then one is for the power of trust, speaking of the project, the relevant member, I said, up to the death of the, is that the portion? All this says is we're noting money for reimbursement, okay?
Yes.
If we issue debt, we intend to pay ourselves back from that debt. That's all we know. It's required by LRC. I mean, I'm sorry.
So, do you want, do we need to take any official action or recognize the fact and maybe put it in the minutes that you had?
Received and filed our first.
Yeah. Okay. I don't want to short shrift you, and you should have popped up after the mayor was done speaking, so. Anyways. So, we will note that there are three declarations of intent that have been presented to council and that would ask that the clerk sew note in the minutes for tonight's meeting. We don't have any petitions tonight. We do have several people have signed up for communications, and Ms. Smith, there is nothing on the agenda regarding the severe weather shelter. So, you can either speak at the end of the meeting, but there's nothing on the agenda item. And we do have Shannon Waller, who's the director of Main Street, and she's here to talk about the facade grants which are contained there in the budget, so.
Yes, sir. My name is Shannon Waller, and I represent Main Street Worcester at 377 West Liberty. And I'm here to encourage council to accept a new item that's in this year's budget. It's a facade grant program for $50,000, which would be matching funds or reimbursing funds for improvements downtown. And this is something that a lot of other communities have done successfully to help maintain the value of their downtown areas. And one of the more longer-standing grant reimbursement programs is Tiffin. That's a population of about 18,000 people. They invest $100,000 annually into their grant facade program, which spurs a level of reinvestment of $3.60 for every dollar they invest. So, that's $2.5 million of private reinvestment that is spurred by this facade grant program. And we will have similar, if not exceeding, results with the improvements in our downtown, which is so crucial to our economic vitality. So, we're very excited about this opportunity, that we hope you push it forward. A few other programs that are around Ohio are facade grant programs in Kent, in Wadsworth, in Delaware, Marysville, Dublin, and Barberton. Barberton has a facade grant program, so we really need one. Another one that I wanted to point out as an example is Swanton, and this is a population of 4,000. It's a small place just west of Toledo. They invest $30,000 a year in their facade grant program. So, it's something that other communities have really embraced. They've sustained it. It's worthwhile. And I have spoken to some of our downtown building owners. We have such a historic downtown, which is fantastic, and it's a great draw for visitors. But these buildings need a lot of extra love, a lot of extra maintenance. And if you're familiar with JK Gifts, that's on East Liberty Street. They recently bought the building that they are housed in for JK Gifts, the Bechtel Building. And they asked me to convey to you that they recognize the importance of maintaining the highest level of quality downtown that the city has built and invested in over the years. This coming year, they are looking to replace their awning roof and paint the trim. They appreciate the potential financial partnership through any grants or funding the city is able to extend to their small business. They would like to thank the city and the council for their continued support of downtown. So, we really want to encourage good stewardship in our building owners. It is some additional expense, and we would rather they keep up on top of it rather than let it go and have that reflect for all of our downtown communities. So, I'm happy to take any questions about the program, the value of it, and how we would like to see it happen, if anybody has any questions. Yes, sir.
Ms. Waller, you just, you outlined the fact that there's a matching program. So, take advantage of the grant funds?
Many programs have a reimbursement program. So, the building owner would have to pay 100% upfront, and with the qualifications and the caps that we decide to put in place, well, the city decides to put in place, that would structure the individual grants that are given. So, for example, Tiffin has a $10,000 maximum for their reimbursement. So, that might be part of a $50,000 or higher project, but that's all that one building owner can get reimbursed for after they.
So, it is a true grant with the recipients not being obligated to repay it?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Waller, if I could ask, where, I'm sure you said this at the beginning, but exactly where are the funds coming from? What organization or is it from the state?
Well, it's part of the budget that's being presented to city council.
So, this is something that your, the city would be funding entirely?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's not, I think your question was implying that it was coming from another source, and the city was managing.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure it didn't need to be paid back. Yeah, it is part of the city budget.
Right, I didn't know. It's not, okay, I'm sorry for the confusion.
No worries at all. That's why I wanted to make sure that it made sense to everybody, what the purpose was, how the funds would be used, and what the benefit we can expect from this.
Ms. Waller.
Yes, sir.
Definition is going to be the key to this type of initiative. We received the information that she forwarded to us several weeks ago. I would challenge Main Street to define the review process for the potential funding. The city has allocated and earmarked some funding availability for this initiative, but are those initiatives and requests going to be channeled through Main Street for facade redevelopment and renovations? And those recommendations then will be presented by a consortium that's reviewing their request, and then will the city match 25% of the total investment up to X number of dollars? Definition is going to be key because these communities all have different thresholds, different dynamics. So, you need to develop the clearinghouse type of recommendation to present these to future council for review and consideration, just like we have the TIR, or just like we have the CRAs in the enterprise zone. There's a program definition of what we can provide in terms of subsidy or grants to every dollar invested. And this is uncharted water for city council at this point in time. So, we hear you loud and clear. It's a great dynamic initiative. Other, you know, cities are doing it. Maybe they're not in as good repairs as downtown Worcester, but nonetheless, it's certainly a worthwhile initiative. But help us with the definition for future council.
Yes, and I've been working closely with Jill Montgomery on finalizing the details of presuming that this item passes in the budget. We were looking at, I believe, a $5,000 maximum per applicant, and it would have to go through the design and review board for approval, and then the architect would have to be approved, I think, as well by the city and that program. So, the city has put together a framework in consultation with Main Street Worcester, and we are just very delighted that they are looking to that really forward-thinking investment into our downtown community.
Well, it makes a lot of sense, and it's certainly a worthwhile program, and it'll become first served.
Yes.
As we define the criteria for review for future council sessions. So, great initiative, good, you're off to a good start, and obviously, you have the support of council and administration because we have earmarked those funds for future grant reimbursements.
Thank you so much, sir. Anything else I can answer? Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Committee reports. There was a finance committee meeting prior to this meeting. Mr. Ansel, would you like to give a recap of that?
Yes, I'll be brief. As the mayor noted, the CFO/COO of Worcester Community Hospital, Scott Boyes, presented the Worcester Community Hospital appropriations budget for 2022. It's consistent with prior years. The good news, in spite of the COVID challenge, the hospital has done well in 2021 and is positioned for a very strong and positive 2022, less the COVID dynamics, which is always an unknown, but they're certainly capable and competent, and they've worked through the process thus far very effectively. The budget, as I noted, is consistent with prior year. Capital investments to the tune of about $10.5 million, which is equal to the depreciation annually for the hospital's capital expenditure plan. It is very consistent with prior years, and we should have great optimism regarding the ongoing success and the financial viability of the Worcester Community Hospital. So, thank you, finance committee members, for participating. That and administration, the committee meeting was very informative, and we talked briefly about any open issues regarding the city's capital appropriation budget for 2022. Most of those questions focused on some of the staffing incremental requests that the city has budgeted, and we reviewed a piece of legislation this evening for the consultative work at the wastewater treatment plant. So, thank you. It was a productive session. We will have another finance committee meeting prior to next council session, which will put our budget and the hospital's budget on third and final reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ansel. And the first item of unfinished business is the second reading of the budget. If you would, Mr. Apollo, please read the title.
Ordinance number 2021-37. An ordinance appropriating from various funds to individual accounts for the current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Worcester for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel.
Yes, I'll be brief and to avoid redundancy, because I just commented regarding our finance committee meeting, this will be the second reading of the 2022 appropriation budget for the city of Worcester. Thank you.
All right. I don't think anyone has anything more to add, and it was, had a full meeting come before this meeting, so. Now, we got 14 items of new business, and prefacing them, many of them are items we see on an annual basis. Most, a lot of those have to do with certain contracts, which are slated for three readings. And those, most of us are familiar with, and then there are some items that are budgeted that deal with either purchase of professional services or materials to be used. So, be that as it may, I will note that we only have another meeting after this. So, I'll leave it to the discretion of the presenter as to whether or not these items will be put on third and final reading by suspension of the rules, or they'll carry over until unfinished business the next meeting, so. First one will be presented by Mr. Myers. It's resolution number 2021-65. If you would, please, Mr. Apollo, read the title.
Resolution number 2021-65. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract with the Worcester YMCA for professional administrative services related to the management and operation of the city of Worcester's swimming facilities.
Mr. Myers, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, President Biden Dyke. This is an annual contract that we've entered into for a number of years. It's been a very successful partnership with the YMCA in staffing our pools in the summer. The added benefit is that we have a reciprocal membership agreement. If you join the Worcester City pools, you're able to use the auditorium up at the high school at no additional charge. So, there's some nice benefits that are part of the crossover for this. The budget's slightly more than it was last year. It does go up slightly. Of course, we have to pay increasing wages each year, but last year, we had a very successful program. There's gonna, I'm gonna ask Alexis Gunn to come up if she has anything she'd like to add or answer any questions that council may have. If there's no objections when we get around to it here after Alexis comes up, I will probably ask to suspend the rules since this is pretty straightforward and we've done it in the past, so.
John, can you make sure the light's on?
Ignore the man that's approaching you.
Yes.
Oh, making sure it's on. It's just a contract that we do every year that's been standing since I've been back with the city since 2015. It's been pretty successful. We have Gwen and Matt from the Y here with us tonight, if anybody has any questions for them as well, but just open the floor for questions.
I don't think I have any questions. We wish you the best in hiring staffing. I know that that's gonna be a challenge, as it is for lots of our businesses in the community, and I know it's sometimes a challenge, any given year, to find the young people that, well, any age person, but it tends to be younger people that can pass the life-saving requirements and guards. So, I wish you the best on that, and we can look forward to a continued partnership. Did you have a question?
Thank you. I want to say, first of all, thank you for all the work that you and your department do to make these programs available to our youth. I think it's a, truly, I think Worcester is a, we're kind of a rare community, and we do a great job making these things possible. There are fees, obviously, that offset all of this. It's my understanding that the city just provides the administrative framework to collect the fees and pay the bill, but people pay for the programs, and so I just think it's a great partnership through the city. Thanks for your, thanks for your labors.
Any further questions for Alexis? Don't go very far away.
I will sit right here.
Thank you. Seeing no serious questions or inquiry with regard to this, again, it's something we've done for the last number of years, I'd like to make a motion to move this to third and final reading.
All right. Motion by Mr. Myers to move this to third and final reading, in essence, to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. You might want to hold the call.
I noticed, yeah. He could fucking vote.
If he would hear his name. You know, when you're engrossed with Mr. Kobalarsik, sometimes it's hard to hear what's going on.
Hey, Bill.
Hey, Bill, we have a vote on the table here. Sorry to interrupt your tête-à-tête.
Can I leave during his, can I leave during his ordinance?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
All right. So, there's been a motion by Mr. Myers to suspend the rules, and a second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Bostancic.
Yes.
The rules are suspended, Mr. Myers. I look to you again.
Motion to approve.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Myers. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Warden. Any further discussion? See, you sat up there for nothing.
Oh, I'm next.
No, she's next.
Oh, okay. Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Bostancic.
Yes.
Resolution number 2021-65 passes. Brings us to resolution number 2021-66. Again, it will be presented by Mr. Myers, slated for three readings. Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2021-66. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a professional or technical services contract with the Worcester Soccer Association for soccer-related activities services.
Mr. Myers, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Biden Dyke. This, again, is something we've been doing for quite a long time, and I'm gonna, I've been told not to call on Mr. Batic, as this is his last meeting. The people who will be managing these going forward to be the questions and answers, but I just want to say personally, thank you to Mr. Batic for the years I've worked with you. I've enjoyed it, both on council issues, the bike path, and I've enjoyed all the hard work you've put in, and you've become a good friend, so I wish you the best. Thank you. Now, if there are any questions, we're gonna call upon Alexis again to talk about this program. Oh, how many years, Mr. Batic, have we done this now?
Twenty-nine.
For the soccer association?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
It wasn't on my paper this time. I usually count on you for that number, but.
You know, when you're a short timer, you're in my memory.
He forgot.
Too.
Yeah. This is the agreement we do with the Worcester Soccer Association every year. Again, it's a budgeted, or the item amount budgeted for this is what we put into the budget to cost. We do receive fees from the programs that pay to come and do their programs on our fields, so there is offsetting revenues that we'll also recognize through this, as you mentioned, same with the pool program. If anyone has questions beyond that, that's why I have Alexis here.
You're getting away easy.
It's good programs.
Well, that's true. These are easy programs to approve.
Hopefully, you're enjoying your new facilities up there at the soccer field.
Yeah.
Seeing there are none, thank you very much, Alexis Dunn, for coming this evening and presenting these. Seeing that there's no question, and again, this is something we've been doing for 48 years, I motion to suspend the rules and move this to final.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Myers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Bostancic.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
And I look to you again, Mr. Myers.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve or adopt?
Adopt.
Whatever.
Motion?
No, I'm just, I'm just.
Do we have an option?
Yeah, I'm just saying one or the other.
Okay.
I'll accept motion to approve, but other people are used to motion to adopt, so I didn't want to think that I was speaking a foreign language, so.
Whatever you.
And I will tell you, next reading will be Mr. Bostancic, so if you want to adjourn and talk to Mr. Batic.
Chief Fisher.
Or Chief Fisher, or Roger seems to hold a lot of sway tonight. Any further discussion?
We're just discussing what we're gonna do afterward.
Is there a second?
Mr. Bostancic, I knew you'd be missed soon. I just didn't expect it to come this soon, okay?
Is there a second on the motion to adopt or approve? Is there a second on the motion to adopt or approve, or whatever euphemism we want to insert there?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri.
Goodness. Okay. Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
All right. Resolution Number 2021-66 passes. That brings us to Resolution 2021-67. It will be presented by Mr. Bostancic, slated for three readings. If you would, Mr. Apollo, once again, would you read the title of this resolution?
Resolution Number 2021-67. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a professional services contract with Engineering Associates of Worcester, Ohio for engineering services for Phase III of the Worcester Bike Trail System Project, appropriating the necessary funds and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Bostancic, the floor is yours, sir.
Mr. Myers is excused for a while.
I'm interested in it.
Oh, okay. Okay, this is a request for funds to enter into a contract with Engineering Associates Incorporated, design Phase III of the Worcester Bike Trail System. This fund, this will fund design plans for the bike trail from the intersection of Friendsville Road and Milltown Road to Melrose Drive, which is approximately 1,100 linear feet south along Melrose and approximately 850 linear feet north along Melrose. Estimated construction costs are $904,000, of which ODOT has committed to pay $836,000 of that amount, with the rest coming from the city's capital fund. The estimated cost of this contract with Engineering Associates is $132,000 and will also come from the city's capital fund. And I should mention that City Engineer Roger Koberlarsik is available for any questions. Roger, you need to.
No, this is just the next phase of the bike trail. Connect everything on Friendsville, Melrose, and soon to be built one along Melrose north of Milltown Road.
There are no other questions. The Engineering Department is requesting passing of the resolution this year in order to facilitate meeting the funding timelines for construction in 2024. So, I'd like to make a motion, put this on third and final.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules, so to put this on third and final reading by Mr. Bostancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Apparently, you guys on this side are gonna do all the hard work in terms of approving and seconding.
What's changed? Yeah, that's typical.
So, if you would please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules, Ms. Apollo.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Bostancic, I look to you again.
Move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bostancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, second by another country you heard from here. Second by Mr. Ansel. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Silvestri?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2021-67 passes. Now, we're looking at ordinance Number 2021-38. It will be presented by Mr. Bostancic. It is slated for three readings. Fortunately for Mr. Apollo, at least this one is a short title, so if you would read it, I'd appreciate it.
Ordinance Number 2021-38. An ordinance levying special assessments for the extension of Daisy Way and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Bostancic, the floor is yours again.
Okay, thank you. This project has been completed and this is, this resolution, I'm sorry, this ordinance is simply a request to levy assessments for the property owners along Old Airport Road for their portion of the improvements related to the Daisy Way extension. A positive note, though, for the property owners here is that the project's final cost upon completion came in at 12% below the original estimate of $1 million, so. Again, any questions? Roger's here. It's pretty straightforward, I think. There's no questions, I would like to request that this be put on third and final.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules, to put this on third and final reading by Mr. Bostancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Silvestri?
Yes.
And the rules have been suspended. Mr. Bostancic, do you have another motion?
Yes, motion to pass.
Okay. Motion to adopt by Mr. Bostancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Silvestri?
Yes.
And the rules have been suspended. Mr. Bostancic, do you have another motion?
Yes, motion to pass.
Okay. Motion to adopt by Mr. Bostancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2021-68 passes. Now, we're looking at ordinance Number 2021-38. It will be presented by Mr. Bostancic. It is slated for three readings. Fortunately for Mr. Apollo, at least this one is a short title, so if you would read it, I'd appreciate it.
Ordinance Number 2021-38. An ordinance levying special assessments for the extension of Daisy Way and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Bostancic, the floor is yours again.
Okay, thank you. This project has been completed and this is, this resolution, I'm sorry, this ordinance is simply a request to levy assessments for the property owners along Old Airport Road for their portion of the improvements related to the Daisy Way extension. A positive note, though, for the property owners here is that the project's final cost upon completion came in at 12% below the original estimate of $1 million, so. And again, any questions? Roger's here. It's pretty straightforward, I think. There's no questions, I would like to request that this be put on third and final.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules, to put this on third and final reading by Mr. Bostancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
And the rules have been suspended. Mr. Bostancic, do you have another motion?
Yes, motion to pass.
Okay. Motion to adopt by Mr. Bostancic. Is there a second?
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
And the rules have been suspended. Mr. Bostancic, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. This is, again, is pretty straightforward. It's sort of a, kind of a legal point we just need to do for this and pretty much it is what it says. Council needs to declare the necessity to do these improvements and to acquire certain pieces of real estate along Melrose for the completion of this project. Any questions, comments?
You're getting off easy too there, Mr. Koberlarsik.
Well, this is, wow, this stuff is just kind of bored, bored of like, stuff you have to go through. I would like to take this to third and final as well.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Bostancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ansel?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2021-68 passes. And before I get back to Mr. Bostancic, and so far, this is the Mr. Bostancic Show, although I see that you have a sidekick at the end here of Mr. Ansel, but.
I think Roger wanted me to work a little harder with my next last meeting.
Yes, that's right. You know, we thought we'd get as much work out of you before we sadly say goodbye to you, so. This is slated for three readings. It's also required that I ask Ms. Apollo to please read the title.
Ordinance Number 2021-39. An ordinance to appropriate certain property interests in real property located adjacent to Melrose Drive for purposes of proceeding with the Melrose Drive Reconstruction Project allowing for immediate enactment.
Okay, Mr. Bostancic, I look to you again.
Okay. This is a request to declare the necessity of acquiring certain properties on Melrose Drive between Milltown Road and Smithville Western as part of the Melrose Drive Reconstruction Project. Forty-one properties have been acquired and three remaining parcel owners have not yet returned signed documents. This is a request to initiate the filing procedure for the three unsigned property with the intent of reaching agreement with all before filing, but need to initiate the project, I'm sorry, to initiate the process in order to meet statutory requirements if agreements cannot be reached and the funding commitments jeopardized. So, again, I'm reading word for word from Roger's description because it was better than what I could come with.
And we discussed this the other.
They had, yeah, they had, there was more properties at that time.
Right, so.
But they, at the time, they had come to agree with others, but these are just the last holdouts.
Right. Without this, we can't proceed, so. And this is teeing it up if we actually have to file a complaint for, to appropriate the property, so.
And no other questions? I would like to put this on third and final again.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Bostancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel.
Please call the roll, Mr. Apollo, on the motion to suspend the rules.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Bostancic?
Yes.
And the rules have been suspended. Mr. Bostancic, do you have another motion?
Yes, motion to pass.
Okay. Motion to adopt by Mr. Bostancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Bostancic?
Yes.
Rules are suspended. I look to you again, Mr. Bostancic.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bostancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any other questions?
If I could ask, I'm just curious, who appoints, or I'm sorry, proposes the members? From what pool of people are they being selected?
They have to be freeholders, which means they have to own real estate within the City of Worcester.
Well, sure, lots and lots of people in the city.
So, that's the pool from what you pull.
Okay.
So, if you don't own property, you aren't a freeholder, so you would not be in the pool.
Well, I doubt this was just a lottery and these three names popped up. I recognize the names from other boards and commissions and I'm just curious if that is what led to their being selected for this.
Well, Rob Casner has done it before and so has Jennifer Reynolds and Jolene Dyer's
new.
Okay. Thank you.
And it helps when people have been through the process.
Sure, and that was what I was curious about.
And as you know, sometimes it's hard to get people to volunteer.
Donate their time, absolutely.
Yeah. Well, seeing no further discussion, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?[1530.13]
Yeah, they, yeah.
Oh, well. Anything further? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Ordnance number 2021-39 passes. That brings us to resolution 2021-69, it'll be presented by Mr. Bastancic, and like the others have been slated for three readings. Ms. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2021-69, a resolution appointing an assessment equalization board for the Melrose Drive reconstruction project and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Bastancic, the floor is yours once again.
Okay, and again, this is pretty straightforward, and this will set up an assessment equalization board, and that will hear any objections that any of the residents of Melrose Drive may have according, in regarding to any proposed assessments. And there are three members of the board that are being proposed, Rob Kastner, Jennifer Reynolds, and Jolene Dyer. Again, pretty straightforward, if there are any questions, I'd like to go to third and final on this.
I'd go third and final, and then we can ask questions.
Okay.
So, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Bastancic, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Bastancic?
Yes.
Rules are suspended, I look to you again, Mr. Bastancic.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancic, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any other questions?
If I could ask, I'm just curious, who, who appoints, or I'm sorry, proposes the members, what, from what pool of people are they being selected?
They have to be freeholders, which means they have to own real estate within the city of Worcester.
Well, sure, lots and lots of people own city real estate.
So that's the pool from what you pull.
Okay.
So if you don't own property, you aren't a freeholder, so you would not be in the.
Well, I doubt this was just a lottery and these three names popped up, I recognize the names from other boards and commissions, and I'm just curious if that is what led to their being selected for this. Just their extension.
Well, Rob Kastner has done it before, and so has Jennifer Reynolds and Jolene Dyer's new.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
And it helps when people have been through the process.
Sure, and that was what I was curious about.
And as you know, sometimes it's hard to get people to volunteer.
Donate their time, absolutely.
Yeah. Well, seeing no further discussion, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Bastancic?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Bastancic, I think we're going to give you a well-deserved rest, and we'll be moving on to resolution number 2021-70. It'll be presented by Mr. Silvestri, and he doesn't have to jump through additional hoops because this is budgeted, but we do have to ask our clerk of council to please read the title.
Resolution number 2021-70, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a professional services contract with Jones &amp; Henry for design and consulting services and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I want to thank Nathan Coy for coming this evening, I know he was, did a great job fielding some of my questions about these, but appreciated his presentation before the council meeting as well as part of the committee meeting. So the current piece of legislation in front of us is for, to procure design services from a firm called Jones &amp; Henry to improve our headworks of our water reclamation facility. And when the material comes into the facility, there's a lot of screening and a lot of filtering out of grit, I think he calls it, and so some of these have been working up to now, but they're really undersized for our needs, and so we really want to kind of take into account, I would presume, not just the current volumes that the plant takes on, but also future projections. And so there's firms that deal with this, and Jones &amp; Henry, as I understand, is a leader in their industry, and so will be, this is a proposal to retain them for those services. And if there are detailed, specific questions, Mr. Coy is here to answer them. And with that, since I don't need to suspend the rules, Mr. President, I hereby move for adoption.
All right, motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri, is there a second?
Second.
I heard Ms. Warden's voice first, Ms. Warden seconded. Any further questions? Is there still time before Christmas? I can order my duck call there, Mr. Coy.
You come down for a tour, I'll give you one.
Okay, all right. Yeah, and Jones &amp; Henry, I know in the past, over the years, did, has done a lot of work for us, they're a very well-known engineering firm here in Ohio, so I'm confident that they'll do a great job for us. And I'm not getting paid for them, by them to say that. Seeing no further discussion, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Bastancic?
Yes.
Resolution number 2021-70 passes. We'll be turning again to Mr. Silvestri for resolution number 2021-71, it's a budgeted item as well. But, Mr. Apollo, would you once again read the title?
Resolution number 2021-71, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a professional services contract with R2 for design and consulting services and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours, but I got to say, when I transferred these into my little script, the spell checker went nuts on R2, and I had to look at it in the original version to make sure that that was right, but it is. Anyways, Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I looked up their corporate website myself, just to verify that. There are a couple things that did get by spell check, I noticed, I believe, in the authorization request, it's a companion piece of legislation to the one previously just passed by council, and so there's only one detail sheet that the manager provided, which is fine, but instead of 10 state standards, it says 10 states standard. And so I imagine that there's 10, literally, state of Ohio standards that have to be met, and that this company meets those, okay. The only other thing, and this is for, this is for design services for our bio solids improvement, biogas flow monitoring, biogas mixing, code and safety updates, tank cleanout, process modifications, biogas flare replacement, and as you saw in the presentation prior to this meeting, the water plant transformer relocation. So I, it's been rewarding, it's been fulfilling to see this, this, this program go forward the way it has. I remember holding an onsite committee meeting many years ago and looking at a diesel-powered locomotive engine that didn't really meet the needs of but a, but a fraction of our emergency power needs should, should there be a power failure for our wastewater plant. So, you know, few people think about what that would mean for a city, but you think about that for a few minutes, and that probably the millions of gallons of capacity that need to, to flow and get cleaned up would come to a screeching halt, that could be disastrous. And so I, I want to back up and just applaud our Director of Administration, Joel Montgomery, for putting together a great program many, many years ago to start down this road, and I was happy to hear that, given the current prices and different structures of different markets, that now it's better to just sell the gas back without it even being scrubbed, and that we could make more as a city than we did generating our own power. I know we were saving at one point up to $30,000 a month on our electric bill, and so this is, this is great news, that we're kind of doing a comprehensive look at the whole facility. And the only other thing I noticed is that in the presentation, it was 307,000 with 20,000 for administrative costs, and in the detail sheet, it says 323,700. So I don't know if that's a misprint, but it's pretty close either way, we're within about $4,000, so we'll, we'll let you figure that out, Mr. Coy, but I will be looking to pass this this evening, and with that, I move for adoption.
All right, a motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Apollo, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 2021-71 passes. That brings us to resolution 2021-72. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel, it's slated for three readings. Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2021-72, a resolution accepting the recommendations of the Worcester Tax Incentive Review Council with respect to existing enterprise zone agreements.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, as noted, the Tax Incentive Review Council meets annually to review current enterprise zone agreements, and this year they met on November 16th to review the 21 active enterprise zones, of which they've recommended ongoing approval of 421 EZ was amended as it relates to a business by the name of Kitty Poo, expanding operations and assuming the Signor responsibility for the facility, and they are exceeding job and payroll requirements, so it's on the upside, they're just a new employer/tenant within the occupancy at the noted facility. This process enables Worcester to be compliant with the state of Ohio law governing municipalities' ability to approve and authorize economic development through the Enterprise Zone Program, so it's very important. The unique thing about the enterprise zone, and it's all about the return on investment, we talk about that periodically, the current enterprise zone program has enabled the city to compete with other major state competitors as it relates to industrial growth and expansion, and as we certainly recognize, we're blessed and fortunate to have the industrial growth that we've had within our community. The current projects encompassed in this review process employ 2,418 people with an annual payroll of about $142 million. The 630,000 in real estate taxes were forgiven in 2022, but 813,000, almost 814,000 was collected. So the program certainly continues to generate and spawn economic vibrance within our community, and it's very positive that the Tax Incentive Review Council take their work so seriously to review the high number of enterprise zones that we currently have within the city. I would like to offer Jonathan Malley any input also on the EZ recommendations, I will move this to third and final reading this evening, this is something that we do every year, and there isn't anything out of the ordinary regarding these council approval this evening. Mr. Malley?
Dear members of council, thank you very much for your, your time today on this. As Ms. Ansel explained, we, we have a pretty high volume of agreements that we are evaluating. Our volunteers for this past year, just to make a quick note, we're Dr. Crane from the Wayne County Career School Center, our own president of council, Michael Beiden Dyke, our Wayne County auditor, Ms. Jera Underwood, our citizens, citizen representatives, Mr. Adam Briggs and Ms. Alicia Holford, along with Mayor Brenneman, our director of finance, Mr. Dordia, and Mr. Gabe Tudor from the Worcester City School District. So these individuals take a substantial amount of time to review each of our agreements, and we've forwarded earlier an electronic summary of basically each of the agreement sheets that we worked through. Part of the reason why we have so many agreements compared to most other communities is that we really spend time investing our program in smaller businesses, whereas a lot of communities will not look at a project unless it's doing a $4 million or $5 million expansion. Worcester has gone out of its way to, especially in the downtown, to welcome small entrepreneurs and first-time business owners, and so that's, that's part of the reason for the sheer number that we have. We have come across with COVID-19, seeing a bit of an impact from that. The figures were still surprising, though, we have some firms that did better than ever, so that helped to balance some of the losses. Most of these, as stated earlier, are recommended for continuance. Of the couple that we do have where we are looking for a modification, one again is, again, to welcome a tenant who has exceeded the performance requirements, so we'll, we look forward to bringing that to council as a separate measure here before long. We have another modification that's related to this, that will, we look forward to presenting as early as next council meeting, where we'll allow, we'll, we'll, we'll be asking for recommendation to transfer a CRA to a new tenant/employer. So by far, especially considering the fact that we had an unprecedented year with, with government intervention that effectively shut down many of our businesses for a significant period of time, we've had a stellar year. I'll also just point out that when we talk about new revenues created, for instance, we'll just mention with our enterprise zone program that we had $813,000 in real estate taxes collected. Those are revenues that are genuinely created, this is not revenues that count for the pre-existing land value or the existing value of the building before the renovation. This is the exempted, or the, the matching exempted, or now in this case expired, revenues that are resulting specifically from that real estate project that but for this exemption would not have occurred otherwise. So this is genuinely at a point now, 15-plus years into, to this project, that real revenues are being generated, that largely support our schools, but also our own coffers, so that's to the benefit of all of our citizens. Happy to answer any questions, but if not, I appreciate the time and thank you.
And before you skate away, you do, Mr. Malley does an excellent job of putting the package together and then also conducting the meeting. We're very fortunate, fortunate to have him here in the city of Worcester, although I am taking up a collection for money so that the next time he decides to give himself a haircut, he can go back to Harvard.
I was just thinking, it looks nice, so.
You should have seen it last week.
It was late at night, I, I was doing it to my, my son for his hair, and I grabbed his razor and put it on mine when I was done, and so then I had to make it match, and technically this part doesn't match, but you know, that's, that's okay.
I knew we didn't have a draft, but I thought he had been inducted.
I'm sure your son is so proud of his dad, matching his.
Fortunately, he's young, so there's time for it all to heal.
Well, maybe look younger, that, that was my problem, is, you know, is he even old enough to vote, and can he present this information to the Turk?
Well, I do appreciate that, thank you.
Jonathan, how your hard work.
He does an excellent job, and we couldn't do it without him, and the materials ahead of time are well organized, and, and the program has just been successful as all get out, and I guess that facade grant will kind of be glove in hand with the EZ, CRA, and so it just shows what happens, and when you see how well the school coffers are doing, you know, when you turn, even with an abatement, turn a piece of property generating $30,000 into $30,000 or, or more, even with the abatement, it does generate a lot of income for the cities, for the city schools.
I echo President Beiden Dyke's compliments. Jonathan, you do an outstanding job, and on behalf of city council, the comprehensive package every year that you compile on behalf of the TIRC is exceptionally well done, so thank you, keep up the great work, and keep generating those new opportunities for the city of Worcester. Thank you very much.
It's very appreciable.
Gentlemen, there are seats up front. I was, I wanted to thank the chief for asking our, our first two members of the Augusta Worcester Police Department into coming in and sitting down, because when they were looking at me, I was wondering if I had any unpaid parking tickets, and there was an outstanding warrant, but.
We'll take that after council.
Oh, okay.
Without further ado, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and move resolution 2021-72 to third and final reading this evening.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
All right, the rules have been suspended, I look.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Mr. Ansel moves to suspend the rules, is there a sec, or moves to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Any further discussion?
Just, just one question, and I just wanted to make a note of this, the TIRC meeting started at 12:00 PM, right? And how long did it go, just for the benefit of the public?
One, it was an hour, about an hour long.
So you kept this, I can't believe you did that in an hour, but job well done, it just, it just speaks to the preparation that you put into it, the hours.
Well, we had it in advance, and I know I looked through it, and I'm sure the other folks looked.
That's a lot of, 34 total projects, right?
And it makes it easy, easier when most of them are, you know, in compliance, so.
Just the CRA alone was the 34.
So, but.
Great.
He does an excellent job in terms of the package and in presentation, so.
Great.
Anything else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 2021-72 passes. That brings us to resolution number 2021-73. It too will be presented by Mr. Ansel, it too is also slated for three readings, and Ms. Apollo, would you mind reading the title to this resolution?
Resolution number 2021-73, a resolution accepting the recommendations of the Worcester Tax Incentive Review Council with respect to existing Community Reinvestment Act agreements.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is the sister resolution to the enterprise zone, this relates to the community reinvestment area agreements. The TIRC also reviewed those, the status of those agreements, and it was a consensus recommendation to accept 24 of the 26 current CRA agreements. Two were modified, as noted, the CNM Properties Worcester LLC, CRA 11-001 was a reduction in the number of employees to five from the previous projected payroll, certainly within from the previous projected payroll, certainly within compliance standards for the CRA, with a payroll of $140,000. And then, as we had discussion prior in the year, Brass Fund has abandoned their CRA for their agreement. So, that was terminated, and we're accepting that termination agreement through the TIRC. Again, state compliance requirement. As a note, the CRA projects have totaled $41.7 million in construction, which has generated $120,000 in new real estate taxes last year, compared to $250,000 approximately, which have been forgone revenue. So, it is a very strong return on our investment. And among the active exemptions, that totals, 113 jobs were created, with 126 retained, for a total payroll of a little over $8 million. So, the program is functioning well and working well. And with those two minor exceptions, they're all achieving the commitment status of the requirements outlined with their initial request. So, I would motion to suspend the rules of council this evening and adopt, or, and adopt Resolution number 2021-73.
So, the first motion is to suspend the rules.
Suspension of rules, correct.
Yes, by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. Ms. DePaulo, would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Stansik.
Yes.
And Myers.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say I'm grateful to the TIRC for being a little flexible in these times when some of the CRA participants perhaps found it a little difficult to meet their employment requirements. I'm glad that we're still honoring our commitment to their tax action.
Thanks for pointing that out, Ms. Warden, because, you know, this was, this, even though this is 2021, we were looking at 2020 when these businesses were hardest hit. And I have to say, everyone was sensitive to particularly 2020 in the difficult economic times. But surprisingly enough, they, most of them did very well. And having seen what's been our budget and our income, we have been really well positioned to survive that type of economic downturn, which speaks well with the synergy between the administration and council in putting some of these programs in place, and in terms of recruiting the businesses that have come in or have expanded here in the city of Worcester. Thanks for noting that. Anything else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Stansik.
Yes.
And Myers.
Yes.
Resolution number 2021-73 passes. Brings us to resolution number 2021-74. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. It's slated for three readings. I'll get back to you in a moment, Mr. Ansel, but I'll ask Ms. DePaulo to please read the title.
Resolution number 2021-74. A resolution authorizing the Director of Finance to issue payment for services rendered prior to the fiscal officer's certification of availability of funds and providing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours, sir.
While funds are definitely available, they were not appropriated. They're in the budget. But as you see our new chairs here in council chambers, they have arrived. They're being used. The invoice was received. So, this is just a housekeeping issue for council to get final approval for the $3,095 expenditure associated with these chairs. I think that's a very, very good value. Mr. Myers might weigh in. He's the furniture expert guru. Those are beautiful chairs. They'll last for a long time. They're very comfortable, so the feedback has been positive. Good selection. So, with that, I would motion to suspend the rules and move Resolution 2021-74 to third and final reading this evening.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. Oh, it's budgeted?
Oh, budgeted. Motion to adopt.
That was my mistake. I didn't catch that.
Thanks, Lynn.
Sure.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second. Oh, what, the furniture guy seconded that.
All right. Well, Mr. Myers seconded it. Any further discussion? I just got to say, when I first started as a city council, when I filled out a term that hadn't expired, and the old Muni Court was in here, too. This place looked literally like the Columbus Bus Station, because they had fiberglass chairs that were on a aluminum rail.
Yeah, yeah, fixed rail.
There wasn't a single chair movable, except what council sat on. It was the ugliest darned building, and those were much of an upgrade, but these other ones are very nice. And there's no reason why we can't have some nice things for our citizens to sit in, so, appreciate it. That being said, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Stansik.
Yes.
And Myers.
Yes.
Resolution number 2021-74 passes. We have a request to go into executive session to discuss personnel. And before we go into that, I see a number of our officers on the police department are here. And I just want to say, if this executive session takes too long, blame the administration, because they're the one presenting it. You know, council is ready to probably endorse what's before them tonight, so. I just want to tell you that, so. The pressure's on you guys. So, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session, Mr. President.
Motion to go into executive session for personnel matters. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. Would you please call the roll on the motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Ansel.
Yes.
Mr. Stansik.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester.
Yes.
And Ms. Warden.
Yes.
All right. We are going into executive session. They are now officially off the record. Again, administration, folks, not me. All right. Before we go back on the record, I will need a motion to come out of executive session.
Motion to come out of executive session, Mr. President.
Motion to come out of executive session by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. Would you please call the roll on the motion to come out of executive session?
Mr. Ansel.
Yes.
Mr. Stansik.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester.
Yes.
And Ms. Warden.
Yes.
We are now officially back on the record, and we'll be looking at ordinance number 2021-40. It will be presented by Mr. Sanders. Mr. Sanders, before I get to you, I will first have Ms. DePaulo to read the ordinance title.
Ordinance number 2021-40. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into an agreement with representatives of the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association regarding wages, benefits, and terms and conditions of employment and allowing for immediate enactment.
And Mr. Sanders, this is slated for three readings, and with that, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been brought to us as part of the OPBA collective bargaining agreement with our police departments. The request is to authorize the Director of Administration to enter into collective bargaining agreement with the police unions, OPBA, for officers, sergeants, and lieutenants. The proposed contract is a result of two months of meetings between the city administration staff, police management, and OPBA representatives for officers, sergeants, and lieutenants. This is also in an effort to attract benefits, or to provide attractive benefits in order to retain current staff and attract new staff. Wages and benefits will be, were adjusted to become more competitive with comparable cities and current served contracts. The city has experienced several retirements over the last two years, and HETS has had significant filing, filling vacant positions. Currently, we average more than five open positions in 2021. These changes have been proposed and approved by the police union for incorporation into the collective bargaining agreement upon council approval. And similar provisions have also been proposed and are being considered for approval by both fire union and WEA. And as we move on to the next page, you'll see there's a section of articles, 12, 13, 17. Basically, we are related to Article 12 and compensation. We are reducing the steps, but we are increasing some base salaries. And then, we're also offering additional increases in 23 and 24, in years 23 and 24. We have additional retention pays in Article 13, which you can see the steps of five, 10, 15, 20, and 25 years as that increases. We have the acting OIC pay and FTO pay, which at this point, I don't want to speak out of turn on this, but at this point, you guys have all read it, and you see it's there. There's a shift differential. There's additional holiday pay, which is actually the holidays, which is adding Juneteenth to the holiday schedule, as per the federal initiation of that. There's vacation changes, and then there's a few miscellaneous items that at this point are all an important part of this for the, for our officers, patrolmen, and lieutenants. I guess, at this point, I would, would motion to, in light of the importance of this, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
All right. There's been a motion by Mr. Sanders to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Stansik.
Yes.
And Myers.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. I look to you again, Mr. Sanders.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, I appreciate the administration and the police officers to have negotiated what is obviously fair to both the parties, because we wouldn't have reached this agreement. And I got to tell you that in the last two years, no one would have ever dreamed what you folks have to deal with and continue to deal with. So, certainly appreciate your service and your loyalty to the city of Worcester, because I know that when we say we have the finest, we do have the finest. So, thank you one and all very much. Seeing no further discussion, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Stansik.
Yes.
And Myers.
Hell, yes.
And I am pleased to say that ordinance number 2021-40 passes. Again, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate it. That brings us to ordinance number 2021-41. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. Merry Christmas to you all, and once again, thanks, and thank you for coming.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
That brings us to ordinance number 2021-41, presented by Mr. Sanders. It is slated for three readings. Ms. DePaulo, would you please call the roll? All right. Would you please read the title?
I can do that.
It's late. It is past my bedtime. I was up at 6:15 on my stationary bike. Daughter's going to either kill me or make me healthy. I'm not. Anyway, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2021-41. An ordinance amending Chapter 162 Management Benefits at the Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this is a number of changes that are being suggested by the administration related to management benefits for the, for the employees of the city of Worcester. The only real thing, I guess, actually, there really isn't anything that I really need to point out or wish to point out on this. I think ultimately, with this item, I don't think anything, any of this information is overly pressing. And let everyone have an opportunity to go through this at a little greater detail. And we'll pick this up in two weeks.
All right. We'll consider ordinance number 2021-41 as having its first reading, and brings us to the final piece of legislation this evening, Resolution number 2021-75. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. It is slated for three readings. But, Ms. DePaulo, I ask you one last time to read a title of a piece of legislation.
Resolution number 2021-75. An emergency resolution to accept the material terms of the One Ohio Subdivision Settlement pursuant to the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and consistent with the terms of the July 21, 2021 National Opioid Settlement Agreement and providing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is very straightforward. This is a participation agreement for the One Ohio Subdivision Settlement pertaining to the Jansen J&amp;J opioid lawsuit settlement. And I want to thank Mr. Scabelli for providing additional clarity and insight into this. But this is a unique program where, based on participation of the municipalities within Ohio, the higher the participation, the higher the settlement amount. Pretty straightforward. So, the state is recommending that municipalities participate in this participation memo of understanding agreement, that they will hopefully receive higher opioid settlement funding. The 80% threshold payout must be met, and if that is met, Worcester will receive approximately $132,000 paid out over 10 years. If higher participation at the municipal level occurs, it can go up to 100% threshold, or a total payment of about $188,000 over the payout period. So, this is just an endorsement piece that will allow more municipalities to proceed through the One Ohio Subdivision Settlement reconciliation. So, hopefully, we'll achieve the higher participation levels, and other municipalities will be proactive like Worcester, so we can receive our fair share of the available settlement funding. So, very straightforward. I don't think we should delay if there's any questions. And again, thanks to Mr. Scabelli for providing the additional clarity for this piece this evening. But with that being noted, I would like to expedite this, and I would motion to suspend the rules of council, move Resolution 2021-75 to third and final reading this evening.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rule? Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rule?
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Stanzik?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. Do you have another motion?
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any further discussion? I assume there's no way we can increase our percentage, except to get more municipalities to participate.
That's the only way. I will tell you, on the distributor lawsuit that was settled earlier—I think we voted on it back in August, if I remember correctly—that we had 95% throughout the state, which was enough to get to our thresholds. So I'm assuming the same thing will happen with this one, so I don't really think that's too much of a worry. But I'm glad that we're doing it tonight, because the deadline they gave us was actually December 8th, so we kind of need to do it today. There's actually a little bit of a later deadline, but that's when they'd like to have it all done, just to kind of feel safe, so.
And it's a large sum of money, but broken up over 10 years, you know, I mean, it's nothing to sneeze at, but in like, we're getting an influx all at once.
It's not going to change the world, but considering we didn't really have to file lawsuits for it, and the lawsuits themselves have been very time-consuming and difficult, I think it's a good result.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Scavelli. Anything else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Stanzik?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 2021-75 passes. Okay. Public portion of miscellaneous. There's Linda Smith's here. I'll remind you, it's two minutes. Timer is right there.
I apologize for the last minute, it really did. I just wanted to update you on the severe weather shelter for the 2022—21/22 season here. It opened officially on Saturday, and it's going to be open tonight and projected to be open on Wednesday. It's only open when the temperature is 20 degrees Fahrenheit or below, or it feels like 20 degrees. There is no federal or state money available to fund this project, and so it's all coming from community donations, and our goal for this year is for about $15,000. So far, we've been able to collect 75% of those funds to sustain the service. We also have eight churches and four local residents—that restaurants that are providing meals to the guests when they arrive there six o'clock in the evening. The hours are from 6:00 PM to 10:00 AM. They must leave the Salvation Army at 10:00 in the morning, regardless of what the temperature's like out there. And we also have recruited approximately 50 volunteers that went through the orientation program, and will be getting their background checks done with the sheriff's department, so that they can be there. We're hoping to have at least three volunteers there each night from 6:00 to 10:00, and then at 10:00, agency personnel from social service agencies have volunteered to come in, and we're paying them $18 an hour for their services overnight. I also want to mention that the task force—the Worcester Homelessness Task Force is sponsoring a community meeting on February 10th in conjunction with illegal women voters at the First Presbyterian Church, and there'll be some information going out on that soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And now for counsel. We'll start out with Mr. Sanders.
Nothing to add this evening, Mr. President.
Mr. Myers?
Nothing further, thank you.
Ms. Warden?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Mr. Ansel?
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
Mr. Stanzik?
Nothing more.
And Mr. Sylvester, because you've bailed me out with your seconds tonight, I'll give you the last word there, sir.
Just wanted to thank everyone for all the hard work that went into tonight's agenda. I know it was a long agenda for us, but I think there was exponentially more hours spent before a lot of these initiatives ever made it to our desk here. So special thanks to city administration for all the work that's gone, not only into the budget, but some of the things that we passed tonight, and then all those in the audience who came to be a part of what goes on here. Thanks so much. Have a great night.
And I want to thank—oh, I was just going to say, I want to thank council for working so hard to get through all this legislation tonight, and I think we, once again, accomplished a lot of good things, and I hope everyone comes with the next meeting with plans to pass the budget, and then we can have a good holiday season. But thank you very much. I appreciate you working so hard tonight, so.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. President.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Ansel. Second, Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.